Vacation. Most gracious Father, we just lift up all praise, honor, and glory to you. Goodness and how it rains down on Columbia County and areas. Father, I pray that you be with us. Work through the issues in this agenda, give us them to make the right decisions. Allow everything to fall into truth. Christ name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America.
To the Republic for which. One nation, God invisible. Evergreen and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, if you have the meeting not by minutes from the June 4th, 2024. Meeting in your packet. If you've had a chance for a view, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Uh, no changes to the agenda, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, not in my laws, Mr. Chairman.
No special recognitions, we'll jump right into the consent agenda. Commissioners, the items on this agenda have been through the necessary committees and received. Votes to be placed on the consent agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all at once.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries on to the debate agenda. Mr. Couch, I believe you're.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution 24-30, fee schedule amendment for Columbia County Performing Arts Center.
Second.
Comments? Questions?
Give you a little detail if you want it.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Who carries? Mr. Caraway.
To make recommendation to Resolution 24-18, 24-19, and 24-23. Uh, to establish streetlight districts in Meadows Phase 1, Clari Section 7, and Ivy Falls West, second reading.
Second. And that, just to clarify, that will be in the form of a motion. Commissioner Caraway, correct?
Motion second on the floor, any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Fill up, sir.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution 24-24, Wright's Farm, Section 3, 24, 25. Island Lakes Phase 2. Dash 26, River Island, Section 2, Phase 3, to establish streetlight district.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolutions 24-27, Jones Mill Phase 2B. 24-28, Jones Mill Phase 3, to establish streetlight.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Have streetlights. You're up, Commissioner Skinner.
Sir, make a motion for Resolution Number 24-31, Amendment of the Fee Schedule for Building Standards, second reading.
Thank you.
You guys that.
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Uh, House Bill 461, amended Article 1, Chapter 13, the Title 48, that says we can no longer establish fees. For permits based on the valuation of a project, so this is the fee schedule following the new effective July 1.
Very good. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Here.
This is one that everybody's been waiting for. Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-32, adopting an annual budget for all funds of Columbia County, Georgia for fiscal year 2024 and 2025.
Back up. Johnson, you want to talk us through?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll just give you just a, just a brief update. Um, like you could see, uh, at the, just really the oversight piece of it. We always start budgeting in Columbia County with a zero-based budget. We did that again this year at the direction of the Board of Commissioners. Um, we started this process, you know, just by working with every department, trying to determine needs. We were able to do that. Obviously, we, we had not looked at revenues yet. We've gone back and looked at revenues now. We did project revenues to come in at 5%. We've been advised they're going to come in a little above that, uh, so the staff will be recommending a, a millage rate reduction at the appropriate time, even with the budget that you're adopting today. The balanced general fund budget, which is the, is the bulk of our budgets, uh, this year is just a little over $100 million, $100 million 644, 268. Um, that is with a, with a contingency of $3.4 million. Again, that will be adjusted when you guys set the millage rate. Uh, we, we would adjust that contingency out for any funds that are given back to the taxpayers as a result of that. Uh, it was a good budget year. I think we worked well with all the elected officials. Um, really no highlights in this budget other than a few new positions. Uh, we did have a little bit of, of, uh, additional capital this year, but I think the, the staff did a really good job of cutting capital where necessary, following that zero-based budget method. Uh, we did include a, uh, an adjustment to our pay scale this year. We found ourselves, as, as y'all can attest. Every MIS, you get an update of our turnover, you get an update of our, of our hiring practices, and, and what we, what we found through going through our study was, uh, some of our pay rates had fallen behind a bit. So, uh, we have included a, a change to our matrix, which affects every employee in Columbia County. Um, so, some of these, uh, raises are much needed for some of the, uh, positions that, that we're really having a hard time to fill. And it's difficult just to, to raise a salary on a individual type of position when you don't raise a salary for the supervisor above them, and then the manager above them. So, uh, it is really a comprehensive look. I want to give kudos to the staff who work extremely hard, uh, doing a lot of benchmarking to make sure that Columbia County stays competitive with our benchmark counties. And also with the market around us to make sure that we can have, uh, the employees necessary to, to be able to conduct the mission of the county. I will say that we, that we still find ourselves with the best citizen-to-employee ratio amongst all of our benchmark counties. So we continue to do more with less, uh, and even with these, these raises that we're talking about here, um, I, I still think, uh, Columbia County is, is extremely conservative when it comes to the way we approach budgets and the way we approach, uh, paying our employees. But certainly we want to make sure that we're fair and equitable across the line. Uh, so I know there was a lot of input i- in that as well. Um, all other funds are balanced, everything you have before you. Uh, we did see some, some increases, um, uh, to the fire department, obviously, as our county continues to grow, we're, we're seeing those grow. Uh, seeing that fund grow as well. Um, but overall, we're pleased with the budget outcome this year, and I'll answer any questions you have.
So, what base pay for deputy, entry-level deputies, are they?
A little over $50,000, non-certified. Once they become certified, $55,000.
That's where?
Fifty-four, six, and some change, I believe. Yes, uh, so that, that gets us back on pace, uh, with our neighbors who had actually surpassed Columbia County. Um, and it, uh, puts us where we need to be with the benchmark counties. There's some agencies in Atlanta paying $60,000, $65,000 beginning. Um, we're just, we're not there yet. Right, that's, 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 that's correct. But we do feel that, that we've been able to make some, the, uh, the necessary market adjustments to, um, many of the public safety departments, whether it be the sheriff's office. Uh, we also made some market adjustments to, uh, the fire department, uh, market adjustments to our.
Fire now is?
A little over $50,000, I believe. Chief, I don't remember exactly what that was, but.
Right.
I think it was right at $50,000. Fire Department. Entry level.
I can tell you. Thank you.
So, in, in, in this, you know, we, we tried to make the, the proper adjustments and, and, um. We tried to make sure that, that it was equitable because people work different hours. So, for example, uh, you know, firefighter works a, a different number of hours every year than a deputy sheriff would work. Uh, the deputies work a different number of hours a year than our, um, bailiffs and magistrate court work.
Firefighter's at 48.
Your level?
Entry level.
I'd like to make a comment. I think it's an excellent move for us. Our employees are excellent. That's why we live in this county, have all the ratings that we have. It's thanks to all these employees, so, well deserved.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
On the, on the, uh, GO bond 17, that the. Out is. Billion seven, I'm rounding higher. Is that, uh, because of higher interest rates? Are we paying it off early, or is that the schedule?
Uh, I believe that's the schedule on that, Mr. Chairman. I'll get back with you to make sure that that's the case, but I'm, I'm almost certain that that's the schedule. Angie, is that the schedule on that payment? It is the scheduled payment on that bond.
Lastly, I see that. If you look on the first page of the summary of fiscal budgets. And then ARPA funds?
Yes.
That been allocated out to a department, or is that in reserve?
Uh, no, it's actually, all of the ARPA funds have been allocated currently, um, so, but they have just not all been spent. All of the ARPA funds had to be encumbered by the end of this year and had to be spent by the end of '26, I believe that is. Is that correct? So encumbered by the end of this year and spent by the end of '26. So everything has been encumbered when it comes to ARPA funds now. And all of those projects have, are, are listed, um, but they will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners individually to appropriate the funding.
Do I recall that we spent ARPA funds on Harlem's water system?
We're about. Yeah, we're about, so, yeah, we have about $17 million. We have set aside for the sewer relief for, for the Harlem system that we purchased.
Thoughts about that, Commissioner?
Much appreciated.
Any other questions on the numbers? You've had a chance to review. Kind of see. I do want to thank you and Ms. Reese for what you've done over the years as you've worked through these budgets. There are stories when it go up for commissioner training of other counties where constitutional officers butt heads with each other and. Takes for a bad environment for the citizens. Not the case here.
Not at all. We have a very good relationship. All the constitutional officers have been through the depth of this process.
Any other questions then? Comments? If there's a motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance Number 2401, adopting Chapter 22, Business and Business. Um, Article 9, Hotels and Motels. Second.
Just a brief update on this. This, this gives us, uh, an opportunity to, uh, go in and, uh, I guess makes it easier for us to go in and remove someone that is staying at one of our hotels that is not paying. County attorney worked on this ordinance. It's really proactive. I don't think we have a tremendous problem with this now, uh, but nationally, we're seeing this issue. We wanted to make sure that we had something on the books, be able to give our law enforcement the ability to, to, uh, go in and make a case if necessary. So that's what this ordinance does.
In essence, it gives us the ability to deal with somebody squatting in a hotel room, correct?
That's correct.
Well, it is broader than that and has to be for the purposes, but yes. Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2436, amending benefits under the Columbia County Employee Medical Plan.
Second.
Uh, this is part of our, our change. It goes along with the budget. Um, we, we are working on recruitment and retention, just as the board advised us to do. Uh, one of the things that we, that we've done here is we're amending our, our medical benefits to allow, uh, some of our employees that, uh, once they get to a, a certain age or a combination of age plus service. Uh, they will be able to retain health insurance. The employee themselves will be able to retain health insurance. This is something that, that we see i- is becoming more common in the industry. Um, we looked at this and felt, felt like it would be a good perk for our employees. Uh, and then on the flip side of that, it doesn't really help with retention, but I think it does help with our overall plan. We do have some employees that are just hanging on for the health insurance, and they've been with us for many years. Uh, and, and they would like to, to go ahead and retire, and if we do that, we're going to be able to replace them. Um, certainly won't be able to replace their knowledge, but we'll replace them at a lower rate. So, um, we'll, we'll have some of those employees that will decide to take advantage of this now. But I think that the intent for this was, and, and, and again, working, you mentioned the sheriff, that was something that he brought to the table a few years ago, looking at this to see if there was a possibility to, to allow it. Uh, we've been able to work this out. We've been able to, uh, come up with a program that works and looked at some other counties that are doing something similar. Uh, so that's the, the crux of this ordinance, or resolution, rather.
Questions? Innovative, it's a good idea, so.
Thank you.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2437, Water and Sewerage, uh, Revenue Bonds, Series 2024, 8th Supplemental Bond.
Uh, we went back to the market again, uh, for our, for some water bonds this time. You'll remember, we went for some bonds for our Public Facilities Authority, uh, a little while back. This is really just to take advantage of the, of the market that we have in place, uh, right now. Um, we went back and affirmed our AA+ rating for our water utility. Working really hard for the AAA, got some really good feedback from the rating agencies. We do have a AAA from Fitch, uh, but we're working on the AAA across the board. Um, wasn't able to get that this time, but we got some really good feedback as to how we might be able to do that going forward. Uh, what we did find was that our water utility is extremely strong, uh, very well respected, and I think that shows today when the bonds went to the market. Uh, we had about $400 million in demand, and we had four, $42 million for the bonds that we sold. Uh, so you had a, a 10-time demand on, on those bonds, um, which drove our, drove the bond yield down. So we were able to lock these in at 3.59%. So we're borrowing that $42 million at three, essentially, borrowing at 3.59%. Um, just really want to thank, uh, the, the folks that, that assist Columbia County. Andrew Tritt with Stiefel is here. Uh, he is our, our banker, uh, when it, when it comes to bonds. And then also, uh, John Pennell and Stevens, our, our bond attorneys. Um, and then also, our county attorney, Mr. Driver, worked on this as well. And then certainly all the folks in water utility put it all together, and, uh, uh, Janie Beth and Leanne really worked very hard on this presentation. But, uh, what it does, it allows us to use the market to our advantage and to put this $42 million to work today on our water sewer side at a, at a really good rate.
Questions? Yeah, just when we have the next committee meeting, if we just get enough stuff of projects.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll put those back in front of you.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Skinner.
Yes, sir. File RZ 240601, I make a motion to approve the request for a major S1 revision for property located at tax map 073, parcel 078A. Tax map 073C, parcels 034B, 027, subject to the condition enumerated in the June 6, 2024 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is a major S1 revision for Trinity Baptist Church. Uh, they are requesting revision to allow temporary classrooms on the site until the school is built. Have a, a site plan you see here on your screen, the location of the proposed school, uh, is shown. Happy to answer any questions you have about this. One, I will say, one condition with it is placed on here is they must, um, provide adequate route for pickup and drop-off of students on school property. Cannot use our right-of-way for their stacking of vehicles. We have had a complaint in the past. We have met with that complaint at, um, aware of this, so, doubt.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Or guesses and one abstention?
Yep. Next, here we have file RZ 240603, I make a motion to approve the request for the major S1 revision for property located at tax map. 024, parcel 067, 065, 064, for a building and parking lot expansion. Subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 6, 2024 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
A major S1 revision, looking to expand the existing building as well as the existing parking lot. Also changes a front setback for the existing church building. We're going to make that setback, uh, 25 feet from the property line. They will have to provide a combination plat prior to getting. Plans approved. Have a parking lot that, that does extend to a buffer in the rear that is existing, so that will be allowed to remain as well. They do show a proposed future gazebo out here as well. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
File RZ 240605, I make a motion to approve the request for the major S1 revision for property located at tax map 077B. Parcel 581A for additional parking lot, a new structure, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 6, 2024 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Picking up a theme here, another major S1 revision for churches. Churches are growing, good thing. Uh, this is a revision to allow for an updated development plan for their site. They are looking for a, a new building as well as additional parking, as you see on the map here, when the condition does require the six-foot opaque fencing, red line you see shown here. Uh, there is no vehicle connection to Answood down here on the bottom right of your screen. They do have a sidewalk connection, but no vehicle connection to that road. They will use McCormick for their vehicular access. We are also allowing some minor tweaks to their building. There are some fire codes they're going to have to meet. So as they tweak that, based on what the fire marshal is, is requesting, they will be able to adjust that building slightly to make it work.
Looks like during planning and zoning, some of the neighbors questioned, um, potential runoff. Have all of those concerns been addressed?
They will have to, to provide stormwater detention. The, the code says that they, the post-development discharge has to be equal to or less than the pre-development discharge. So that'll all be, uh, addressed during site design or reviewed by county staff.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
File VA 240601, I make a motion to approve the request for a variance, property located at tax map 082A. Parcel 272, to reduce the building setback on the northeast property line to five foot. Proposed addition.
Second.
As you see here, this is an established neighborhood, and the applicant is looking to add on to their building to, uh, make space for their growing families. They're looking to make the side setback five feet. Currently, the house is, uh, 7.9 feet, so the house is currently inside the setback. Uh, reducing this to five feet will solve that issue as well as allow them to make their expansion. Happy to answer any questions.
Any neighbor comment?
Any other questions? Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Next, we have, uh, file VA 240603, I make a motion to approve the request for a variance for property located at tax map 071A. Parcel 022B, to reduce the rear building setback to zero, subject to the condition enumerated in the June 6, 2024 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
There you have a variance request. Uh, this, this is a unique situation where the property owner, Patrice, if you'll go back to the aerial shot, uh, from maps online. Yeah. So the, the parcel in question is the one outlined in red. However, the property owner owns the parcel around it. It's in Kuva. Um, when he purchased the property, it was already in Kuva, so he's looking to get a zero-foot setback on the red outline. Once Kuva has expired, he will then join both parcels together to create one parcel. At that point, those property lines disappear. Perhaps in favor of this, with the condition that he cannot be within 10-foot, are all structures, future structures, must be more than 10-foot away from property lines that compromise tax map 071A, parcel 022. So we're protecting it once the combination plat is done, but at this time, he owns the lot surrounding his lot, so makes sense.
How do we guarantee that these parcels will be combined once the?
Without a condition, we really can't. So if you want to put a condition on it, that they must be combined with fires.
That's not one of the conditions?
No. I, I think that may, may further complicate it as well. So I don't know. I think it's probably two separate instances where, if, if you're interested in doing this with the, with the zero setback, I'd probably go that route. But I don't think we would get into whether or not he would combine them for Kuva purposes or not. Now this board, I don't think we'd probably want to direct someone to do that.
I'm with it as it is.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Next file is, uh, file VA 240604, I make a motion to approve the request for a variance for property located at tax map 074A. Parcel 024, to allow 24-hour operation.
Second.
The Parkers has purchased this existing gas station. This is going to be a, a tear-down and rebuild, and they are asking for, uh, variance to allow 24-hour operation. There is currently one across this, off Cross Park West Drive that currently operates 24 hours.
On I-20.
Said they're off, yeah, your off-ramp is, is here, and, and there they are.
Questions?
Are there any special, um, stipulations or conditions?
No, ma'am. There, the zoning currently meets everything they need, so the only thing they're asking is the 24-hour operation.
Any other questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Passes four to one.
Last item for me is file VA 240605, I make a motion to approve the request for a variance for property located at tax map 074. Parcel 046, to allow the proposed drive-through car wash to have the lanes and any other objects associated with the pass-through. Placed between a public street and the associated building, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 6, 2024 Planning Commission.
Second.
This request is for a variance, uh, for this property that was recently rezoned.
Oh, rezoned?
It recently rezoned to C2 from residential. Um, they are planning a car wash here. However, they are in an overlay protection district. Part of that, uh, language in that dis, in that overlay protection district is that all drive-through areas, including but not limited to menu boards, stacking lanes, trash receptacles, ordering box, drive-up windows. Other objects associated with drive-through must be located to the side or rear of a building. As you see here, the stacking lane. Pay box is not in the rear of the building, it's out front. So they were to put the building here, it'd still be out front. If they were to put the building here, it'd still be out in the front. Just the way the operation of a, their circular motion, it's going to put the drive-through lane in front of the building at some point.
This puts it away from the neighborhood behind.
It does. It puts the drive-through lane out on Bel Air Road versus towards the residential.
My only concern for this, excuse me, the only concern that I have is that I feel like this should have been addressed at the original zoning. Uh, I, I have a distaste for this. I've, I've approved it, but I would, I don't want the neighbors behind to think that I pulled something on them. Uh, this should have been presented along with the original request, in my opinion.
The applicant like to speak at?
Christian Wall, 404 Abritway. So basically, you know, we're going through all this with staff and saying, what do we do? How do we get this? You know, how do we present this? And that was how they told us to do it, that we don't, you know, we don't need to go for that now. We're just trying to see if we can get the C2 and the CC. So that's what we did. We didn't come in and say, we're baiting and switching. I see your position.
Yeah, that, I'm just concerned for the citizens of Columbia County that's close to this.
Sure, and I understand.
You remember, there was a lot of questions. We even had a meeting.
But.
The meeting worked fine, but.
But to your point, they.
I was looking back at this.
But to your point, everybody in that meeting understood that there was a car wash. They had that full 3D. We had a giant printout. Everybody could see where it was going. There would be a drive-through, where the pay stations were. There was no, you didn't sneak it in, we didn't sneak it in.
Right.
It's simpler to keep the variance for another day.
Only be for the car wash portion, not if you put a Dairy Queen over, have another drive-through or something else. It's only for the car wash.
Correct. So you have a C2 and a CC, and the CC is still in that protection node, and I think there's a condition, uh, from the zone, from the zoning hearing, that, you know, we're not trying to sneak in drive-throughs on everything. It's just to allow the car wash, you know, to have the drive-through, which by default, a car wash is a drive-through. But I understand your point.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. No legal matters? No requests for review by committee yet. One out there hanging somewhere.
We lose, yes.
Public comments or participation? Now we have an executive session with a couple of items which we, I believe we can deal with right here and now, so we'll jump right into those, and Vice Chairman Malir.
Sir, I make a motion to approve the employment contract with Zach. May I make a motion to approve the employment contract with Zachary Allen for right-of-way?
Second.
That will be filling a, a vacant position in our property acquisition team, so, uh, forward to moving over from tax assessor, I believe.
I wouldn't want to be in the tax assessor's office right now. Let's see. I bet they get in some-
Jumping off rats on a ship. There's a motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Zachary is moving.
I make a motion to approve the employment contract with Renee Caprari for, um, visitor information specialist.
Second.
This is a position that was in the budget that you just approved. It is a contract position, so it requires the contract approval as well.
Questions? Motion second on the floor. Raise your hand. Mr. Caraway.
Make a motion to approve twenty-three thousand seven twenty-eight, Michael Orr, parcel zero seven two, oh forty-seven, fifty-three thousand seven hundred to Eric Stewart, parcel zero six zero zero three five, to obtain right-of-way. Perford Farm Road, I mean, project.
Gets us to forty percent complete.
Go, Matthew.
We're marching. We're marching.
Motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve two hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred dollars to William and Jean Thornburg, parcel zero seven two A, zero two two, to obtain right-of-way and/or either Perford Farm Road.
Second.
Forty-one percent complete now.
Come on, Matthew. Pick up your pace. Motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve one hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to William and Jean Thornburg, parcel zero seven two A, zero two two, replacement housing supplement.
This is the replacement housing payment for the previous property you just approved. We have to also make up for differences, additional costs for their new place they're living, additional mortgage interest, cost of housing, makes them whole.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. There's only one more agenda item that needs to be dealt with.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, raise your right hands. We are adjourned.
Eric and Wolf.